I will call this a special meeting of city council on eleven five twenty-five to order at eleven oh three. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
With the two flag United States of America and consider Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start from the roll please.
Mr. Lawson.
Here.
Mr. Pack.
Here.
Mr. McHale.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider and discuss and possibly act on authorizing and instructing the city attorney to initiate legal action against the Secretary of State and Athens County Board of Elections relative to the twenty twenty-five general election. But when we start, should we make a motion to do so or just go into discussion, make a motion now?
I think discussion would be appropriate. I did have one question, the council.
Yes.
Whether, so I'm here because I was instructed to be correct. Am I being instructed to be here pursuant to my general city attorney duties or pursuant to my special projects, which is under my signature contract?
Under special.
In light of that, all of my time spent here will be billed by my firm at the city.
Nice. Please, thank you. All right, so we'll hold off on a motion at this time. Normally, under special council meetings, we don't. I'm going to allow for citizens' comments. Three minutes, if someone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium. One person speaks at a time. When citizens' comments are done, council discussion, there will be no more input from citizens. I just want to make that clear ahead of time. So, sir, you have the vote.
Hi, I'm Derek Bowens. I have a business here in Nelsonville, twelve seventy-three Chestnut Street. I tried to ask in the finance committee meeting, but no one would answer. My question is, if this pending lawsuit that we have, Mr. Robes' billable hours to this evening, how is the city affording this extra cost? What are we, what revenue are we bringing in to offset this pending lawsuit that we're facing? Anyone? You will?
Typically, attorney fees are paid out of three separate funds. And that's where it will come from.
What are those three funds?
Water, sewer, and general.
And let's say that we run into a seven-figure lawsuit, we're trying to sue the state of Ohio and the Athens County Board of Elections. You know, what happens if we get to a point where the city's destitute, you know, doesn't have the funds to continue? Do we have the funds to have an impact like this?
I can't answer the question on potential litigation.
Okay.
And this is citizens' comments, so.
Well, I'm just disappointed in our city government at this time, you know. I'm just a local business owner here. I'm doing the best I can for the city and, you know, me and my brother here, we put our best foot forward every day. And I'm proud of Nelsonville. I love to call it my home. But here we are, the will of the people, seventy percent, decided to change the form of government, and I think someone should listen to that. It seems to be three or four people in council don't want to listen. And here we are deciding to spend hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of the city's money on a potential lawsuit. So, you know, I know individually each of us want Nelsonville to be the best place it can be, but as a whole, we're deciding to, I guess, dig a bitter hole. So I just, I don't know what the reason for this lawsuit is. You know, I guess, can you answer that question? Why are we suing the state of Ohio?
I'll allow you to make comments as well as anyone else.
Okay. Well, I just think it's disappointing here, no, no, they're sorry. Mr. Flowers was elected to be our next mayor, the first mayor in thirty years, and I'm proud of that. And we need change in the city of Nelsonville. And I just don't understand how the collective has decided to sue the state of Ohio and have a frivolous lawsuit. So it's just disappointing. There's a lot of hardworking people here that really try hard every day to make Nelsonville a better place. There are the select few of you that are the deciding vote, and you're taking a step backwards. So I'm just disappointed, you know, I like to think, I know some of you, some are friends, but I just don't understand, so I guess that's my comment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, stop, stop, stop. We're not going to do that.
Yes, we are.
No, we're not. Mr. Smith, so if I may address the drums.
Comments up. Of course, I, I'm just the attorney. I can't make decisions. I have to just obey my instructions. Whether or not to authorize initiation of a lawsuit is not my decision. I don't have any impact, in, input on it. I think you're exactly right that.
Hold on.
We need to dress him, because I want to make sure my podium.
We have a lot of people here tonight. We want to make sure everyone has a voice.
Well, I think it's a conflict of interest that our city attorney can advise in special matters and then also advise on behalf of the city. Because he can advise on the special programs that, hey, I recommend that we take this, that there's not special language in this transition. He advises whether or not the transition is a good or a bad thing, but then says, oh, no, I don't advise whether or not we sue the state of Ohio. So who's giving us legal direction?
That's not what I said, number one. I said, decisions not.
So I can advise the legal, the legal.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're not going to do it this way, okay?
The city of Nelsonville needs some lawyers.
I'm sorry, I'm allowing you special consideration for citizens' comments. We're going to allow everyone to speak. You have three minutes. We want to keep it at that. This is not going to be a back and forth thing. Citizens' comments. So allow the city attorney to speak.
It's not, it's not a conflict of interest. In fact, the reason this, my contract is written that way is explicitly to dissuade the city from filing lawsuits because of the cost. That's why I wrote the, that's why I proposed the contract that way. So it's not a conflict of interest, number one. Number two, if, if the city initiates a lawsuit, it won't be frivolous. The city very well may lose.
Okay.
But that's not the standard for what frivolous is. I've probably the city will lose. But that's not, that's a completely different question from whether it's frivolous or not. The reason I say that is because Nelsonville has lost cases in the courts that other cities would have won. So even if it were fifty-fifty, and again, I'm just giving my unvarnished kind of best guess. I don't have a, I can't read the tea leaves. But my best guess is even if it were at fifty-fifty, the courts would rule against Nelsonville. I think that's consistent with what you are articulating about not filing it.
Yeah, my concern is I can't walk from one end of this town to the other on a sidewalk without, no, through grass and just various many things in this town that the money can be used for. And yet, you know, here we are, you advise that we're going to lose, but also you financially gain if we go into a lawsuit. So I just don't understand. You're financially gaining from being here tonight in the special meeting. Who's paying for that? Who pays your wages? Yeah, we do, all of us. We're just wasting our time talking. I'm wasting our city money talking to you right now.
It's a special project. I pay this wage. They pay us as middle outlandish.
Correct.
Okay, I just, it seems frivolous, but that's my time.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, anyone else?
First, who first start? I'm going to try to talk loud, because everybody tells me, I can't hear you. Stop loud enough, but I won't be yelling at you. I'm just wanting you to hear me. And since you said you will answer questions on what I've got to say, I'll voice it differently. Number one, I want to know why you feel like you have to continue to try to change what the people want twice. We've been on the ballot, we voted for, and, and it's always been that people want to change to the statutory form of government, and it seems like, oh, you want to be fine. If that's what the people want, are you embarrassed to try to keep it up? Do you know what people are saying on Facebook? It sounds to me like they're going what they feel, how they feel about they've won and you still want to fight. They have told you more than once how, what they want, and it's not you. They want the statutory form of government. For these, they think it's right or wrong. You don't like it. You think it's a bad idea. It doesn't matter, because the people is what counts. You've had your chances. You're not making success. You're not making people happy. That's what you've got to do. All you want to do is come against us. You've spent all of our money. We have no money, and yet you're going to continue to do that. And we've got to pay you. It's already admitted that we're going to be paying, and it's going to cost us a lot of money. And the people, what they've said, they're not happy. I fear we're going to have an uproar in this town if you don't stop. Because people are angry. Hope I said it loud enough.
Okay, anyone else?
I'm Zach Bowens, not Derek Bowens. My name is Zach. I'm a small business owner, nine forty-eight Chestnut Street. And I'm here because I care about the community and the future of Nelsonville. I'm not sure, I'm not here to attack anyone, like maybe my brother was there for a minute, but I'm here to talk about the facts and fiscal responsibility and respect of the people who live here. And with that in mind, I want to address the council directly. Issue twenty-three was not even close. It passed eight sixty to three hundred and sixty-four votes. That's almost seventy-one percent of the voters asking for a change in the government. That's not really a vote, that's more of a mandate. Yet, instead of working on a lawful transition, this council has chosen to delay, resist, and now risk dragging Nelsonville into a legal battle that could be well into, you know, six or seven figures. Sorry, my eyes are adjusting. Real leadership is simple. Sit down with legal counsel, the board of elections, and the petition committee. Create a legal transition plan and, hold on one second here. Plan to seek a joint legal ruling. No more procedural games. No more million-dollar legal, you know, pursue or battle there. Respect the eight hundred and sixty people who voted yes on issue twenty-three. And let's leave the city or step aside and let the people that actually care and work and, and live and build businesses in the city take over. So congratulations, Johnny Flowers, on that mayor election. We appreciate you putting so much passion into the town. And we just really hope that we can keep the city finances up and grow and build the city instead of chasing a really expensive lawsuit. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, this is John Neese, Walnut Street. So I guess my question for you as a resident of the city of Nelsonville is when do we stop this? When do we stop spending our tax dollars? When do we start wasting the court's time? Something has to give. You claim to care about Nelsonville, but yet here we are again. Obviously, you do not care about Nelsonville, or we wouldn't be here. So I'm just wondering, where does it end or does it end? I mean, what happens comes January first. I know what should happen. Mr. Rob, I respect you at least making residents aware that these are billable hours and it's costing us more than our tax dollars. The honorable thing for you to do as a professional, I would probably just wipe my hands and walk away. It's not worth it. They're, they're going to drag you through another lawsuit that you already know you're going to lose. So guys, where, where does it stop?
Any other comments?
I got three minutes, so I got two minutes left standing up here and waiting for an answer. I'll use it.
Any council members engage in discussion?
Yes.
I do have a question, not specifically to you, but to several of the people who have spoken so far, and that is, should we try to make people happy by transitioning to a form of government that is more expensive on its face to run? Because it would include, introduce staffing positions that don't currently exist in the city structure? And it would reduce our revenue through a lack in transition plan that would preserve our authority to collect the one point seven five income tax?
And who says we're going to lose all this money? Where, where are we losing by switching government? I'm asking.
Under the Ohio Revised Code, city councils only have the authority to pass a one percent income tax. The point two five percent and the point five percent that we collect currently on top of that were passed by the voters under charter authority.
Well, my opinion, my hillbilly man, we'll probably say that lawsuits.
I agree with you.
To be honest, well, man.
That's not true.
I, I, I just, I don't know. When, when does it stop? When, when do you guys stop thinking you can just continue to spend our money till our community goes broke? Because it's going to happen. You know, we have spent, we have spent, and we have spent, because we had an auditor in here that said we had all this money and advised you guys we had all this money, so we spent. Now all of a sudden, we're broke and we're continuing to file lawsuits. Do you know what it's going to cost the city to fight the state of Ohio? They're not caring what it's costing, but we as a community have to care. That's my three minutes. Thank you.
Good job, John.
I'm Greg Smith, other than two thirty-eight Avenue Street, and I realize from all of you don't like this, but I got a correct quote she just said. There is no legal opinion whatsoever established that we will lose that noted income tax. I have personally called the, the taxation officials in Ohio, and I voted taxes collected. So unless you've got some legal authority to present that, please present that legal authority. Now, I want to point out that these are not my figures. Sue Powell got a, did a public records request. And she found out that as from January the first to September, that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars has been paid on legal fees.
Twenty different figure from what you were saying earlier, sir.
A hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and four point forty, and forty-eight cents of that was paid out of the water and sewer fund. Now, we have all kinds of people in Nelsonville that live below poverty, that struggle, that the water office employees will tell you, they struggle on paying their water bills. You guys are talking about raising the water again, yet a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, that's more than your fourth percent raise that you're talking about raising it. So we've got people that have lost their food stamps, are struggling, and we're sitting here talking, we're sitting here talking, I worry about it every day.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Order, 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 everyone, stop right now, right now. Mr. Smith, continue.
This is what's representing our city, trying to help the city.
Hold on, hold on.
You guys are wasting our time. I'm not here. This is garbage.
We're not going to do what you are attempting to do. Okay, hold on, hold on, thank you.
I'm Mr. Smith. Mr. Pack, I want to provide a brief.
This is not, sir, this is not, hold on, hold on. We're not doing this.
I'm not hounding. I've helped with the hounding.
Mr. Pack, we are not doing this.
So you're, what you're doing is you're harming poor people to do a lawsuit that your lawyer just sit there and told you you're probably going to lose. And I hear this stuff, but we've always taken, we've always taken the legal fees out of those three funds. Doesn't make it right. Back when I was a cop, I went to a domestic violence one time, and this guy had just really slapped his wife all over the place. And I started to put handcuffs on him, and he said, well, I've been beating her up since we got married. That's your excuse for, that's your excuse for spending money out of the water and sewer fund. Well, we've always done it. Well, it's not right to do it. And it's not a little bit of money. Every guy that goes in that water fund outside of construction projects are paid by people that are working down at McDonald's for eleven, twelve dollars an hour. And it's just wrong for you to do that. And it's wrong, again, it's again wrong for you guys to sit there and say, the people in Nelsonville are stupid. We don't have to listen to them. We're going to do what we want. Even though they have fully expressed themselves a number of times, but no, according to a few of them, you think you know better than the citizens in Nelsonville. And you can stop with your lies about we're going to lose the income tax, but you cannot show any legal authority whatsoever. Thank you, Mr. Pack.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Hi, I'm Andrea Johnson-Hatchman, three twelve Grover Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. I just want to say that when people went to the polls and voted for issue twenty-three, they voted for a government that was going to respect them. And when they voted against issue four, they voted for a government that would respect them. Filing lawsuits against the other people is not respecting the government. And I would ask council, once again, please rescind ordinance fifty-four twenty-five and give the voice back to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we quit on this, Brad, let's.
Sure, Brooks, one twenty-three East Columbus Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. Been along, been a resident since day one here. A lot have been said, and I agree with every bit of them. But I would ask everybody that's sitting right here, right here on this campus, would you, show a hand if you'd like, would you spend your own money, your own money, to file this lawsuit against the state? Would anybody here do that? Okay?
You just had your attorney, which I, you know, expect and say that probably going to lose, but you'd spend a hundred thousand dollars and knowing that you're probably going to lose.
There's a problem. There's no guarantee that it'll all end.
You know, I have, I have, I mean, most of the people in town have that, that feeling. These people work hard here. These people, these people in this town, you know, it's, it's a struggle. It is a struggle with the water bills and with, with everything that goes on with the groceries and so on and so forth. I think you'll fool around, and you may get people here that'll start to say, you know what, my city income tax, so on, I'm just not going to pay it. I'm just going to keep it. Now, that starts, if that starts, and it could, what are you going to do then, when people finally said, enough's enough? Now, you've gotten beaten, and you've gotten beaten. I learned a long time ago, playing sports, it's going, you know what, I come home, you said, did you win? No, we got beat. Oh, my God, I didn't go out and just start yelling at, you know, the opponent or going down to Athens and telling them, you know, you're no good or something. I took that, we got beat. Was it one point or a hundred points? And you've gotten beaten numerous times here. You got beat at the polls yesterday. I don't see where you're going with this other than spending our hard-earned money again. So I would select to tell the people of Nelsonville, I would tell them, every one of them, if this continues, the only way we can get back is just not pay our city income tax. We have a swimming pool that we got to put hundreds of thousands of dollars for the kids, for the community. But yet you want to spend whatever, a hundred thousand dollars on lawsuits that hadn't got a chance. It hadn't got a chance. It's a waste of money. So I would like to see city council sitting here today and vote that you got beat, it's over, and we'll go on with the new type of government that we, that the citizens have asked to put in. And they did. So that's what I'm asking, and I hope we can do that.
Thank you, Stephen.
If we could do that, we could live life like we used to.
Anyone else?
I'm Dave Allen. I live at nine seven six Walnut Street. I have worked, worked in Columbus for the last twenty-five some years, almost thirty. I pay taxes to the city of Columbus. And every, every time I pay to Columbus, I also have to pay to Nelsonville. And not only have the high water prices. So what I'm saying, what I got to say is, we're going to sue the Secretary of State. Really? We're going to sue the Secretary of State. I'm going to get out of bed in the morning, drive to Columbus, and you're going to take my money and sue the Secretary of State? Really?
Anyone else?
I have a question. Will you respond to us in any way at all when we are all, you know, caught up, spoke how we felt?
We're about to have council discussion when citizens' comments are finished.
I think it might be the last one. You guys might be off the hook a little. Fine, I'll go. All right, my name is Charlotte Beach, and I'm a small business owner and a square and a resident as well. You guys have some tough stuff happening. I came in to this city when there was, it seemed like a lot more turmoil. It's evened out some. I became an active participant by coming to more of these meetings on a more regular basis. So I've gotten to see the small changes, the things that show up in ordinances. And a lot of that is great. It's momentum, you know, it's good progress. I'm proud of it. That's why I invest my time and I care, and all of you guys should come back more. Not just, not just when it feels like this, when there's other stuff to talk about, the parks and the crosswalks and, and the roads and, and everything that you could have put input into, come, come be part of it. They have a tough decision to make on our behalf. They're here. A lot of them are new, newer seats, April, May, June, this year. I don't envy where you guys sit. I rely on the groundwork that you're going to make this decision on, so that one day when I come to that side of the room, that I have a chance of success and everybody's not mad at me. We all want it to be the right decision. And you guys have a hard one. So I want to thank all of you guys for coming, because it matters. Every comment, every person matters here. Your guys' thing matters, sir. Thank you for coming. Thank you for being here. Good luck. Has no comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mountain Mystic, it's a rock and crystal shop.
Anyone else?
Next door, New Leaf was.
No other comments? Okay, as I said, once council discussion starts, there will be no more citizens' comments. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Ms. Honey, did you receive any written comments? Oh, okay.
I'm going to open the floor to council discussion. Mr. Flowers.
Yeah, I respectfully, I want to say that, and I'll reiterate in case somebody missed it in the past, that I was elected by citizens. The citizens gave me the opportunity to try to help the city out. And that's what I've been trying to do. When the citizens did go, and a lot of you expressed this, when they did go to issue twenty-three and voted it, pretty renowned, pretty renownably voted it in, I was for the citizens. If it would have been the charter that was voted in, I would have been with the citizens. This isn't a personal thing to me. It's a city thing. It's not for my benefit to run for mayor. It's a city thing. And I want what the citizens want. I believe you've all spoken about it. We've gone through it three times with courts and have not, the city has not successfully won those cases. I just feel like it's, it's just a spinning wheel. And, and I don't know if it'll ever quit. So, I, I am with the citizens. I respect your, all of you. I respect your opinions on it. And I appreciate, I appreciate you being here tonight.
Mr. Flowers, when you don't come to committee meetings, are you doing that for the benefit of the city?
I'm doing it for your benefit.
Pies up on a bit, need, I show up.
You don't have to look at me.
When you engage in misinformation, um, when it comes to electoral politics.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. I said, "No, no comments, okay? Council discussion, thank you."
This is council discussion. When you engage in misinformation about electoral politics, does it benefit the city? Yes, you, you did.
Okay.
Um, especially when it's due to...
Aren't we gonna sit on the next council when it comes into an office?
Issue four?
Aren't we, aren't we gonna, no, aren't we gonna sit on the statutory council? Aren't you gonna be on that council?
I'm not, I'm not going to sit on the statutory one because there, there is no statutory form of government.
So, why did you run?
That was what was going to happen at the time when I ran.
People put in the petitions, "I voted for twenty-five."
Yeah.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Hold on, hold on. Hold on. The same rules apply to councils, please.
I collected signatures to appear on the ballot for the statutory council in April and May of this year. Because at the time when I started collecting those signatures, there was only one person who had put their name in for statutory council, and that was a shame. So, I, I put my name in, and I encouraged other people to, and I helped them collect signatures.
And you were voted in yesterday?
Yeah.
Why did you take your name off?
I'm not taking my name off. Whatever happens on January first, I will be here.
It's gonna benefit you. That's right.
You are the one who was on Facebook saying that if issue four passed, you weren't interested in being the mayor under the charter.
I never said that.
You did.
Never, ever, ever, ever did I say that.
He said so personally.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Excuse me?
This is outside the special meeting.
This is a special meeting. Normally, under special meetings, citizens' comments are not even allowed. I made that allowed, so now we are having council discussion.
But this is, this is personal tax, sir. This is not about your, what you called the meeting for. That's what you need to be discussing. Ask your attorney.
I'm questioning his...
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. This is council discussion.
The statement that he has made that he is for the citizens of the city when he does all these other things.
Okay.
When he would not wanna serve under the charter as a mayor.
I never said that. Never, ever.
Okay, all right.
You did.
So, are there any, Mr. Flowers, do you have any other comments?
No, I just never said that. I wondered what the citizens want. How can I say I wanted, didn't wanna be on the charter?
I don't know how you could say that. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Are there any other counsel?
Sir? If I may, start from kind of a, an additional perspective. I think there was, I've just been condescending over one of the questions I forget who asked about what's next. Oh, I think that's the exact correct question to ask regardless of how one views the issue. That has to be the ultimate question that, that is asked. Here's, here's the rub. Currently, Nelsonville law is ordinance fifty-four twenty-five. Agree or disagree with it, that is Nelsonville law. Unless and until it's either repealed by the legislative authority or declared unconstitutional by the courts, it's the law of Nelsonville. No court has struck it down, so it's still the law of Nelsonville. Again, unless and until a court strikes it down, it remains the law of Nelsonville. Regardless of whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, the repeal of issue twenty-three is the law of Nelsonville. The only way to get that struck down is through a court action. I understand there is a current court action seeking that relief. But as I explained at the last meeting, given the court's denial of preliminary injunction and because this is a unique situation where the ordinary change in burdens of, in burdens does not apply, almost, it's very, very likely that that case will be dismissed without adjudication on the merits of the ordinance fifty-four twenty-five. If that's right, there would have to be another litigation initiated to get a court order to strike issue, uh, ordinance fifty-four twenty-five down. If that's wrong, ordinance fifty-four twenty-five in that other case would get struck down very early in the proceedings of any new litigation, regardless of whether the city brings it or someone else brings it. The principal question, I think, is timing. Because again, what if the court dismisses that prior, the current pending litigation without resolving the issue of the ordinance fifty-four twenty-five? That leaves the repeal of issue twenty-three in place as a matter of law until it's challenged again. It seems to me the city initiating an action against the election authorities is the only case that can be brought between now and January first. Otherwise, on January first, there would be as many as a dozen lawsuits filed over each individual council seat. That would be very, very expensive for the city. Now, that could be avoided if the current pending case results in a, an order striking down ordinance fifty-four twenty-five. But we don't know that, and the only indication we have from the courts points in the other direction. Because remember, the standard for preliminary injunction is clear and convincing evidence. The standard to get an ordinance struck down is beyond a reasonable doubt. So, when the court said it didn't meet the clear and convincing standard, that's lower than beyond a reasonable doubt. If you can't meet the lower standard, you can't meet the higher standard. Now, could the court change its mind? It could, but it's very, very unusual for a court to change its mind on a pure question of law in a matter of weeks. It could happen. It's just not foreseeable that that will happen. Ordinary, in the ordinary case where a court denies a preliminary injunction but then reverses course later on because of more, there's evidence, there's new facts that are made of record. That's what changes the court's mind, not the law. Because the court, when, the court, when it rules on a preliminary injunction, recall, the first factor is substantial likelihood of success. So, if the court says there's not a substantial likelihood of success, which is what the court said in that current pending case, that's an indication of what the court's view on the merits is. And that's why I think it's highly unlikely that the court will change its mind. Now, of course, even if the court declines to strike down issue, or sorry, ordinance fifty-four twenty-five, that could be appealed, and that could be overturned on appeal. But again, that's talking, the court of appeals is typically slow. We're talking possibly a year. In other words, that case could drag on for a year. The, the half a dozen to a dozen lawsuits that could be filed January first could have. If the clock starts then, we're adding two more months to that year. And again, a minimum, and the problem is, those cases would have an automatic right to appeal before the Supreme Court. Again, you're, we are talking a situation in which the earliest like, the likeliest time, the earliest likeliest time of a final non-appellable decision could be into twenty-twenty-seven, even twenty-twenty-eight. I'm not even sure how the costs would come out in terms of the, if, if we wait until January first, I'm not even sure how those costs would be paid. I'm not even sure if we, so, the problem will be, one side will have to pay out of pocket, and I don't know if the insurance company will pay the other side. So, in other words, and the problem is, there are court cases that say, when people have initiated a case like this, you can't spend public funds for that. I don't know which side, even if the insurance company stepped in to say, "Well, we'll pay one side." I'm not even sure which side that they, they would say. I, again, you know, I stand by what I said before. I don't think it's likely that the city will win, but it's not impossible. But it may be necessary. Part of the problem is, when you file a lawsuit, you have to take a position. You can't just say, "Hey, Judge, it could be this, it could be that." You have to take a position one way or the other. And the city, because the city has a duty in court to defend ordinances until they're struck down, the city has to take the position that ordinance fifty-four twenty-five is the law until a court strikes down, even though I think it's probable that that will happen. I guess the one thing that I will say, if I, if I, if council will forgive me, since I'll be out of here at the end of the year, the court case won't be resolved before then. I won't be involved in it. I understand my duty and obligation is to obey, obey my instructions of the council. I'm basically going to, if, if council, well, if council doesn't authorize me to file any lawsuit, obviously, I have to obey. If the council does, I have to file something for the sole purpose of handing it off to someone. I don't know who that, that is. But it will be outside of my control probably very, very quickly. Just because it's what, November and I, I'm done at the end of next month. So, I don't know which way that cuts, but keep that in mind. I think that's all I can say. Thank you.
Is there any other counsel?
Yeah. That's it. I sit back there and I listen. I'm not from Nelsonville. I chose to come to Nelsonville. Nelsonville is another beautiful city of wartime. I'm originally from Athens. We moved out. Why? Because the economy was moving around, classes were moving away. I come here to Nelsonville, and I hear a lot of you in here. Most of you wanna be part of the problem, not part of the solution. We have committees that are set up around here that are undermanned. Nobody volunteers for one. You look at right now with the way you have the statutory government set up, people from E, one ward, Ward one, two, three, and four was supposed to be nominated from an area. Did that happen? No. Why? Because the way this thing was set up, it was set up to where it was chaos. I'm, I'm a firm believer myself and everybody else on this council, if we have a smooth transition period set up to go in how everything would be set up, have our wards set up, and everything that's supposed to happen in the statutory form of government. We didn't do it. So, we're gonna go, well, we're gonna pick and choose, show you the primary ballot today, all right, yesterday. Was every position filled? Was there anybody else running except for selected few that people have selected to put in position to run this city for you guys? And these, some of these, most of these people have run this city in the past, and what happened? At one time, we was bankrupt. City was just about bankrupt. So, then they come up, they come up and do the, uh, Taylor was able to come up, find our ways, and now we're in a plus as far as what our budget goes and everything. What has this committee done? We've gone through, there's water treatment plant went in, there's sewage treatment plant went in, there's sewer lines being upgraded, there's water lines being upgraded. Now, you don't hear none of that. All you hear is, "Well, my street's tore up." Well, yeah, we're gonna put in water lines there. What would you like me to do? Pay, pave the road? And then come back and put in water lines and paint it again and waste more money like it was done in the past? Fine example up here, brick road, we paying dollars, all taxpayer money for it. Had it down good and even. What we do? Let some of your gas come back in, the half-assed work. Dig a cross through it, pour its concrete through there, and it's half-assed, everything loose, now look at the road. It's going around. My problem with it is, I'm for, I'm sort of for the statutory, but go the right way. Have a transition period. A lot of this stuff that's being put out here that this ain't gonna happen, that ain't gonna happen. Well, I for one, I worked in the city of Columbus. I've worked in the city of Columbus since nineteen ninety-three. Every time I go to a different employer or a different contract, I ask them to take out Nelsonville city taxes on me. We can't. I said, "Well, you have to." I said, "The city of Nelsonville charges me." Well, we can't do, I said, "We, it goes through Rita." "Oh, okay, but as far as what the state says, they don't charge us." They don't charge outside citizens to live here for income tax in the city of Nelsonville. And I'm factually, so. But that's my, that's my, I keep hearing people saying, "I love Nelsonville, I love Nelsonville, I love Nelsonville." But nobody wants to get on the committees or anything to help out. It gets now started, individuals are stepping out. Most of you say, "Well, I spent my time." What, you left Nelsonville? What do you do? Left Nelsonville for a short time and then say, "Just on it." Well, if somebody else worried about it? That's what I'm seeing here in this town, like.
Mr., Mr. Flowers. It's like, can two thoughts, um, that occurred to me. Um, there was a, I forget who, someone made a comment about, interpublical comment about the future prospects of the income tax. I think that's another, I forgot to say, sort of, I think that's the right question to ask. I can't give specifics, but I can say, and I don't think this matters about, just give them the entire situation. I think Rita is deeply concerned about the future prospects in Nelsonville. And I'm not sure that that, I just, I'll just leave it at that. The second point, miss, prompted with Mr. Lawson's comment about transition. So, ever, ever since our country's been founded, we've had to deal with the issues introduced by transitions in form of government. It's, legal histories have even glossed over this, but, so, let me, I'll just give examples starting most generally and then work in our way more specifically. When the thirteen original colonies were English colonies, they used English common law because they were all subject to the King of England. Their royal charters even had provisions saying, "Hey, these colonies are subject to the laws of England just as if they were in the realm of England." I think almost every, if not every charter had language like that. When our country declared independence, it severed that, like, that basis for the common law. Because the common law was introduced via royal charter into, into America. When we declared independence from the authority of the king, what was the basis for the courts to continue to rely on, on common law? The way the thirteen original colonies solved that problem was after independence passing specific legislation incorporating the English common law to the extent that it's not contrary to American law and custom. In other words, English common law would recognize the king, "Well, we don't have kings in America." So, you have to, you have to change the common law to be in a... So you have to, you have to change the common law to be in accordance with that custom. That's a national experience. Uh, you know, Ohio, so, you know, Ohio, you know, when you crack open your history book, it will talk about the ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven, the Northwest Ordinance. Your history books are not correct. It was not the ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven that governed Ohio when Ohio became a state. It was the ordinance of seventeen eighty-one. What happened there in, in, uh, in August of seventeen eighty-nine, that first Congress, after ratification of the Constitution, reenacted the ordinance, the Northwest Ordinance. Why? Because the intervention of the ratification of the Constitution supplanted the original authority for the Northwest Ordinance. Congress was concerned about the continuity of lawful government in what? In the Northwest Territory, we parted it, ultimately became Ohio. So they had to re, they had to reenact the basic form of government authorization for the Northwest Territory. It was not the ordinance of seventeen eighty-seven, but rather the ordinance of seventeen eighty-nine that controlled when Ohio became a state and adopted its eighteen oh two constitution. In eighteen fifty-one, the Ohio Constitution was replaced. We've had two constitutions of the state of Ohio, the original eighteen oh two and then the eighteen fifty-one. What is Schedule One to the Ohio Constitution is, all statutes currently in force not requiring it to this new constitution shall remain in force. In other words, there's transitional language, express, specific transitional language. What happened when Nelsonville adopted the charter, I think it's section eleven point oh eight A, reflected almost identical language to Schedule One to the eighteen fifty-one constitution. Again, it's not my job to say whether ordinance fifty-four twenty-five is a good idea or a bad idea. But the legislative findings of fact of the council were, was expressly concerned about, there was not that identical language from the charter, from Schedule One of the eighteen fifty-one constitution. Again, you could trace it back to the ordinance of seventeen eighty-nine, to the, um, acts of the original states incorporating common law. That's the American, Ohio, Nelsonville legal history experience. History is, it, it, you have to be careful when drawing conclusions from history because history is never as clear-cut as it looks to us today, perhaps, or perhaps we would like it to be. I think you can make legal arguments one way or the other about that history, but it is striking the trend. And again, it's interesting, even some of the leading legal history texts don't pick up on that. One of my law professors who's, um, one of, one of, if not now, one of the leading originalist scholars in the country once wrote a, a Law Review article where he said, hey, the most fundamental job of an attorney is to run chains of authority back. And the reason is, if a link is missing, you don't have legal authority. Your job is to run the chain back. If you find a, a missing piece, whether it's, say, be, well, a classic example would be an achievement title for a piece of real property. If you're missing that piece, you cannot convey legal ownership. You know, now, I, I, I get it, we're not talking about real property here, but the same principle, um, running the chain of authority back. A definitive court ruling, one way or the other, supplies that chain, one way or the other, as to the form of government. And it may, it may just require a definitive court ruling, one way or the other, to do that. But again, that doesn't decide the question of whether to take particular action against the election authorities or not.
Okay, is there any other council discussion? I want to make just a couple of statements. We too, all at this table, are taxpayers. And I do resent the comment that we refer to forty-nine percent of the people on our poverty level as stupid. That is a comment that has no place in this discussion. We took an oath of office here, and I am sticking by my oath of office and the decisions I make. Now, that, that's for myself, that's, I'm not speaking for all the council. So this is, this is ugly business that we're in right now. There's no question. So I just ask, moving forward, that we do respect each other in trying to resolve all these issues. Is there any other council discussion? All right, I make a motion to authorize and instruct the city attorney to initiate legal action against the Secretary of State and Athens County Board of Elections relative to the twenty-twenty-five general election. The motion is on the floor. Second, we've already had council discussion. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Town?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. With that, I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Anyone interested in recalling these guys? Motion on the floor to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Thank you for everyone.